Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have Reverend Roosevelt Biggs who is here tonight. I'd like to address the Board regarding the Nash Rock and Mount school system.
I'd say good afternoon to y'all again. I'm not here to talk about the Nash Rock and Mount as much as I am Escone County. In nineteen ninety-two, I was occupied watching Escone County and Tarver City go through that merger. Didn't miss a single meeting. But I just don't understand how a county can sit back and allow your resources to go somewhere else. I got picked must've been Friday or Saturday, and I saw Reverend Gilliard was running for the House. But his platform is that with the issue, and he said we take money, take teachers out of the system, take public dollars, and also it would change the athletic ranking for Nash County. So if that's a plus for Nash County, it would have to be a plus for Escone County. And I just don't understand why Lee Hall, well, I guess I can understand why Lee Hall did in ninety-two, but I think Lee Hall was trying to survive himself with the merger at the time. They still sit on the sideline because they mandated him to go into retirement. But our current system, I just don't understand, or he's gone. I just don't understand how he can stand before county commissioners and not advocate for the kids in Escone County. I don't see how you all as commissioners can advocate one group of students in Escone County over another group of students. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Escone County Coalition for the Advancement of All Students. And we feel strongly that if a child live in the boundaries of Escone County, they should all be given the same opportunity to academic and athletic opportunities. And the county commission, I was very instrumental with the district, coming into the district concept. But the district concept was never designed for someone living in Rock and Mount to want to sit on Rock and Mount and only be interested in Rock and Mount. The district concept for Escone County Commission, the sole purpose of it was to keep any group or individual from coming from the same turf being elected. And with the, before they went into the district concept, there was a possibility that that could have happened. So they went into the district to keep that from happening. And I say this, if you live in Rock and Mount, you should be just as concerned about that kid living down in Cuneta, Speed, as you do those in Rock and Mount. And, and witness, I admire you, you have done a lot for Escone County, you have done a lot for Rock and Mount, and I have supported some of your decisions. And I assure you that I won't allow your decision on the merger to define the legacy, but I think it was one of the baddest decisions that took place in ninety-two, and we are suffering today because of that. And I hope that you will exert your leadership and try to correct this matter before you leave the board. Thank you. Thank you for your confidence. Moving on. Next, only gentleman on the, this gentleman's public petition. If anybody would speak at public petition. Please, sir, just come forward and state your name and address for the public right.
Hey, how are y'all?
All right.
I've called from the address. Live out of town on Fisher Creek Highway. All y'all talking about is big money, so I don't believe you. I feel funny standing here talking about a dollar a month. But I'm saying about principle, not economic. I got a lot of different stuff in me. Saying they gonna charge us a dollar a month if we mail our papers in. But a lot of people, especially older people that sell, not quite here, here, because a lot of their county don't have any of that. And they don't have the dues. I don't. So they expect me to pay them an extra dollar to pay them. But yet they worry about the green, and I think the green is they worry about the yellow bank account. But anyway, that's just a matter of principle. I think if I'm mistaken, you know, authorize franchise for the Southern.
They do authorize franchise, yes, sir.
Sir, I didn't want to speak about something before you talked. I just wondered if something done about it, why she had to pay a dollar to pay them? We mail our papers in every month, I'll be going to use. Now all of a sudden, they said you're gonna charge me a dollar, or you're gonna go online. I don't, I don't mind to go on.
Well, I, I.
Do you have a telephone? Do you have a telephone?
Oh, yeah, I got a telephone.
Nine nine, nine 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 nine, have a hundred, that's a thousand of that kind of situation. You can pay on the telephone with either a credit card or a check transfer from your bank account if you have one. So that shouldn't be an issue for you, sir.
Well, I'm gonna agree with him, I think.
Well, I don't think they should charge you for.
I think, I think, I think he's got, I think.
No, they don't charge you for paying them.
I think he got a good issue, because I, I got the same telephone, I don't know how to pay on the phone. So if you really, if you really talk about something, I think it is about a principle. And I think we need to, uh, uh, Mr. Evans, I think the majority of this board would at least be willing to write a letter to voice our concerns. It is kind of a monopoly, and if you can't build over them, then there, and there's probably an unwillingness for another company to come in. So, but we can at least voice our opposition as a board on that, sir, whether that will help or not. But I, we will be willing to do that.
Yeah, and, Mr. Felton, I appreciate you calling me to the telephone, but that's really good.
That's, that's the way I pay mine, that's how it works, that's why. It's pretty simple, actually.
That's right, you're right.
I don't have a phone that you can pay it on, so.
I want to, that's the clue, whether you can go down to the Tarver office and pay it? Do they charge you a dollar to pay it there?
Must be on behalf of a lot of people, probably can't.
I, I, and he makes a very important point. They're forcing, they're forcing, you know, you try to pay it the way they want you to pay it, rather than mailing it. And when those of us elderly are paid by checks all of our life or mail them in, they're forcing us to use the technology or learn how to use the technology that we might not do in our state. I think we would write a letter, sir.
Thank you, brother.
We send them a write a letter, or force our opposition that, if there's a disagreement on the board.
Don't talk about big money, you're not talking about dollars.
And I, and I certainly, I, I, I agree with, I probably got the letter, didn't read it.
I have read it.
But you, you, usually we do get that correspondence, because we are, we do award franchise, we have Mr. Evans. And please make sure to get your address, make sure he gets a copy of that, that we write. And opposition to that, please, uh, Ms. Jenkins, get his, uh, get his number for us, please.
Could she get a copy of that letter, do you have it with you tonight?
And also get his address.
She'll make a copy for me.
Make sure, and make sure that you get his ad. And make sure we get his address, so that Mr. Evans would give him the, call it as part of the fund to him.
I tell you something, Mr. Evans, I can do what you want in South Dakota, I just recall. You have to pay your gas bill. You can't come into this office over there and pay your gas bill. And I was, I was, I was right on the date, one time, about six months ago, and I said, my God, they gonna cut my gas off. And I did everything in the world I could to get that check in there, but I couldn't. I finally, one of the work service people lives about five miles from my house, so I went up to his house. I said, is there anything you can do to keep them from cutting my gas off? I mean, it's a serious problem, and I'm not making light out of it at all, okay? But it's a shame, really, when they won't let you walk into the office and pay that bill, that's, that's the big thing.
And we said, we said, oh, respond to that, sir, thank you for your company.
I thank you very much, y'all, sir.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak at public petition? Please come forward, take your name and address for the public right.
George Sills, two forty-two North Fifth Drive, Tarver.
Okay, sir.
Yes, uh, we have issued a disclaim about our horses.
About what?
Horses.
You live in Tarver?
With Steven and Speedy.
You go ahead.
Okay, um, on April, no, in March, I called up to the county to ask about, you know, you have the land rent for ten dollars for ten years, some flood lengths. Okay, I called up and I asked them, because I was gonna buy this house on North Fleet. They told, I asked them, I said, um, is it horses? You can have horses up there, but no buildings. And she said, yes, that's correct. I was in the lawyer's office when I called, because I wasn't gonna sign a paper to get the house, because I couldn't have my horses there. What, a week or so ago, they came to us, horses couldn't be on the land. After already they bought my property and everything, then they tell us that we're gonna have to move our horses. And they're telling us that, um, horses can't be out there now, from some rules back in nineteen seventy that they overlooked.
I've been living in this area ever since, since always had a horse. All this brother down there had horses.
Can anybody tell, what is the rule?
What is the rule?
If I could, if I could, so, this is property that we acquired through bio program, Hurricane Floyd. There are restrictive covenants that come along with bio programming. Having horses, as long as the fences don't impede the flow of water, is allowable, which is why they will. And that's been done in some other places where lots have been leased. And about, about a week ago, it was brought to our attention that that particular subdivision has restrictive covenants that prohibit livestock from being kept in that subdivision. So that's why they were notified with that. But I think Ms. Jenkins may have mentioned to you since, don't do anything now. We're gonna do a little bit more research on that and see if there's any way around it. We had another gentleman that recently came up to lease some other property that is back there, and he was planning to do the same, and that's when it was brought to our attention, that there are restrictive covenants that, that run with that subdivision when it was first put in.
Do we have other land near the vicinity that might, might accommodate if we can't do this?
Fairly close, but I think their, their point is the reason they bought that house.
That's the only reason I bought the house.
Is because of the lot adjacent to it.
You bought a house in this.
Right next door to that property. That's the only reason I bought it. I, I went even sign the papers at the lawyer's office, until I was affirmed that I could have the horses there.
But what I'm hearing could have been, he could have gotten some information from us, okay?
That was wrong.
It, it sounds that, but, and I, I think the manager is, is, is working on it.
I figure, I figure.
Excuse me, Mr. Felton, excuse me, Mr. Felton. I think the manager, he appears to be working to, uh, put their restrictions out there, get their restricted covenants. We do have a problem, okay? We do have a problem, okay?
But I, sir, I've transferred my job from Virginia to here so that I could move here and have this land and have my horses.
And I, I, I hear you, ma'am.
And it's not fair for me, because of their mistakes.
We're gonna do everything that we can. Uh, but that, let me ask, listen, Loach, we got restricted covenants out there.
So everybody this week gonna have to move their horses?
I, I can't say, I don't know, because I'm not looking at the situation, so I really can't speak to it. The only thing I can speak to here now is that the manager telling us that he is working to try to resolve a problem, okay? And what we can do, if he works, if they continue to work to try to help you resolve that problem, that's what we can request him to do, okay? And we will request, as a board, for him to continue to work to resolve your problem. I don't, I can't sit here and tell you what the outcome is gonna be, but it appears that we got at least, in telling you that you could, I don't know what he's gonna do, but he'll be recommending something. He might not bring it back to us, he might can get it resolved without coming back to us, but that's what we're gonna instruct him to do, unless I hear something different from his board. Listen, below you have any comments?
They should have given them something in writing that they could have their horses there.
Huh?
They should have given them something in writing that they were allowed to have horses there.
But even if we had given, if we had given, but if we had given them something in writing, we still could have been violating their, their restricted covenant.
That could be, but you're held responsible for telling them that you can have it.
No, but we told them that.
We, we told them that.
Y'all told me, y'all told us.
We, we.
We, we told them that, okay, we told them. And we wanna try to iron that out here.
How many, how many horses you got? How big of area of land are? Acres, two acres, five acres?
A hundred by two hundred.
Nothing, acre for five horses.
We got all land too, just with the house too.
Mr. Evans will work it out for you.
Well, Mr. Evans, what we can do, we don't know what the legal is wrong, we can't resolve those legal issues here, but we will ask Mr. Evans and who was within his power to, uh, help you all resolve that situation.
Do you have a car or something?
He's the county manager, give the opinion.
Somebody gave you some bad info, didn't he?
Yes, sir, and it's really hard for me.
You wouldn't need him to bother if you don't have.
I'm the boy.
Typically, uh.
The covenant is what?
It is rare for, where this subdivision is, is in a very rural area of the county, so it's rare for a subdivision out that far to have those kind of restrictions, and we just don't, you know.
And a restricted covenant is even such an tease, sometimes a lawyer might overlook it.
And, and even now, um, there are only about, maybe after the buyout, there are only about three or four other homes out there, I think, left in the subdivision. The rest of them qualified and participated in the buyout program, so, uh, I, I just, I mean, I'm certainly not making excuses for me and my staff, but it, it, it would, would not have been a subdivision would have caused us to think that there would have been that type of restriction.
I understand, Philip, what you're saying, I'm just saying that, and see if we can work it out.
Absolutely.
The land that they have, it's, it's bought through the federal government, is, is floodable?
Right. The, the lot that they are leasing from us was bought with the buyout program, the house.
Through the federal.
They gave, they gave us the land, the county owns it now.
We had to pay a dollar.
A dollar whatever it is.
Okay, so would not, would not, the law, the federal law supersede jurisdiction of a subdivision since this?
Well, I think my understanding is that the FEMA restrictions basically are layered on top of the existing subdivision restrictions.
That's not what I was doing, okay, well, once, we need to check into what we can.
Do what we can to, do what we can to, this time to resolve it.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you.
This time I'm back again. I just want to share with y'all how that situation happened. When y'all brought their land out there, you had a choice, again, you could rent it, but Lorenzo Carmen, he told y'all that all the land in the county, he felt like you either rent it for records and so forth, or either let it grow back up to natural habitation, and y'all sell the timber off for years from now. Last Saturday, about eight o'clock, I got a call from the mayor's speed, telling me, not this past Saturday, but Saturday before last, telling me that somebody had leased some lots down in State and State, and there were more than three houses, I'm gonna say, no houses on the front, just part of State and State as well, so about maybe twelve along the front. But somebody wanted to lease the land, uh, and he didn't, he didn't tell me why, but he told me about where the land was. So I told him, I said, well, do you have a map? He didn't have a map, but the guy that was trying to lease the land had the map. So last Sunday morning, about eight o'clock, the guy comes out and showed me the map. But when he showed me the map, one lot that he was leasing, I already had that lot leased myself. And, and, and you got big timber trees and stuff up there, and what he was planning on doing for leasing for the lot, and had talked to Mr. Kevin Sharol in, in Princeville, about going in there bulldozing the lots down for him to put his horses. I think Mr. Sussnem's situation is different. Mr. Sussnem house, there's a house there, and the lot that is there, that, that lot has never been grown up. The bigs kept it maintained, so it's already, I mean, it's a clear lot, they weren't planning on going there pushing it out. And they're right next to their house, and I think it's a difference in somebody having a horse next to their home than a horse club wanting to put up, uh, horses out in that area, and they don't live out there. That's what Mr. Evans is gonna work, to see if he can resolve this, right thing.
My name is Lou Danson, I'm from South Park, thirteen ninety-one Hines, out of North Carolina. My field address, one two seven Midway Lane, Tarver, North Carolina. I want to commend the board for, um, how you all voted down the recommendation from the National County Commissioners. I appreciate that, but what I am disappointed in, I wish y'all hadn't done anything, because that was nothing but a bunch of bullion going on. I know the whole situation, and, uh, they want, uh, didn't even want Rock and Mount at the table. I, I know the history, because I've been working in Rock and Mount, um, thirty years, we started here in January. I remember the NWA CP and other organizations, been attending the Rock and Mount City Council meetings, and I know the history behind it, they want to shut down the Rock and Mount City Council, so, uh, they bullied them out. So then they came over, I watched the meetings on WHIG TV, and I really commend you how you handled the situation the other week, uh, the meeting, uh, when, when Bill Fair talked about the relapse. But what a lot of people don't understand is, back in nineteen ninety-two, the schools in Rock and Mount were solely built by the citizens of Nash, in, in, in Escone County, Rock and Mount citizens. It's, it's about, I think it was Bradwell Pope, Vaskavio, Parker, Yes Johnson, Edwards, Rock and Mount Senior High, Englewood, February Road, Rock and Mount High, Berman, that was just, just been since nineteen ninety-two. Uh, February Road, Rock and Mount High, Berman New, Red Oak, Winston, Tar River. I just wish you all, uh, from what I understand, my research is talking to folk. And, 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 and just talk to people as I came in the middle of the day, because I didn't make it to the ten o'clock meeting in Rock and Mount and the three o'clock meeting. But I just wish you all, it was told to me that if y'all hadn't have done anything, that the, the only reason y'all are doing, the only reason they're doing something in Rock and Mount was because of how you all voted. I just wish y'all had have, had have voted not to do anything and, and let them do what they wanted to do, because the Rock and Mount school system, National School System was working just fine, and it would work fine, it just had a bunch of power hungry folk over there wanting to do something different. And anybody in Escone County that, that, that have agreed with Nash County folks, I don't, I don't understand. And I thought more of, of my people that represent me, but to side with Nash County Commissioners, and, and they want to leave Rock and Mount out of the process, I don't understand. And I don't hear Rock and Mount school system, uh, talking about, I've been reading the letters to the editors, where, uh, a lot of you prominent people over there are against it too. So I just don't understand how my people that represent me in Escone County was for it. So again, I commend those who voted against, thank you.
I gotta respond to what he said, because I got figured he was looking straight at me and were talking to me. Now, the only thing I want to tell you.
He was looking at me.
I was looking at.
He was looking at me.
Brother, because I was committing.
Everybody worked any harder on that than it must have been the chairman than I did, Mr. Boswell. And we were right on it from the get-go, and what I was looking at was the absolute best of the bad situation. I agree with you, it should never have come up, but it did come up, and it got to be a red hot topic. And it got to be Dash County against Edco County. But there was a letter in the, to the paper in Tarver this week, or last week, that said that they were tired of Dash County paying Edco County's kids to go to school. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my absolute life, and the hardest thing to deal with in this world is ignorance. And anybody that don't know how hard we worked to get the situation where it is now. It turns out, based on what's happened in Raleigh now, we don't go high school, we don't go high school, because I, but it looks like that Mr. Wiggins was right with the final issue on the vote, the final vote. And, but that's looking back, we can't do anything about that. Now, the thing I was looking at was we had seven points of contention, and the only two that didn't involve money were the two that I felt like we could live without. Because sooner or later, you can get a change in Raleigh, but you gotta remember something, Mr. Tancy. The legislature in, in Raleigh right now is controlled by Republicans, and there were Republicans asking for that. And we don't have enough control over what Republicans do in Raleigh. Senator Enam don't have anything to do with it. Mr. Willingham don't have anything to do with it, because the legislature is one hundred percent controlled by Republicans. So when that being the case, we have to try to look after our own interests the best way we can. It's like fighting with one hand tied behind you, now you probably will get bitten up to it.
Well, what you ain't gonna do is, because I've been active in politics since the late eighties, I know what's going on, like I just said earlier, I know who's behind it, Robert Davis, Jeff Collins, those guys from Rock and Mount. So I know, I know, I know who's behind it, so you don't have to lecture me.
We're not gonna get, we're not gonna get made up with you.
Wait, wait, there ain't no problem about calling names, I know who's in the legislation.
I think you have.
I'm a very active, a very active Democrat, I know who's active, but my, again, I stand behind what I say.
I'm not trying to lecture you about.
Wait, wait, well, I'm gonna walk away.
I thought you were trying to lecture me.
I didn't call your name, I called people names, you know me, I called people names. Yes, sir, Mr. Felton, you know I called names, so don't go there.
And I have to come speak at public petition. Hearing none, moving on to other business, uh, do my eight consideration of approval of budget amendments. Mr. Evans, is there anything to be brought to the board's attention?
Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
No motion.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye. All opposed, hearing none, passes. Number D, consideration of authorizing the Fire Department Office to issue the necessary permits to the town of Tarver and town of McRusfield for their fireworks displays in town on July fourth, two thousand seven, at nine P M. For the town of Tarver, July third, two thousand sixteen, at nine P M. For the town of McRusfield, and for the town of McRusfield, is there a motion to approve?
No.
That's, question? Correction.
Twenty-eight in town, July fourth, two thousand seventeen, I think, two thousand twenty.
Would that, would, would that be a motion for a correction?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in fa, questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye. All opposed, hearing none, is approved. Consideration of approval, first about this church proclamation, it is in your package, is there a motion to approve? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye. All opposed, hearing none, is approved. Number D, consideration of approval of contract amendment, number two for Nigo construction project, Mr. Evans, is there a comment?
Yes, sir, you have a contract amendment number two, Samper Contractors Incorporated, construction sewer collection system, Nigo Church Road and Dunbar Road area. These, there are a list in your packet of deletions and additions, and it basically amounts to a net increase of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and five cents. Another change in this change order is the addition of three hundred days to the time for substantial complete, completion and final payment. This is due to adverse weather conditions and unexpectedly high groundwater levels, excuse me, which significantly slowed down construction. I do want to note, I didn't put it in the memo, that the primary funder, of, funders of this project are aware of this time extension.
They have no problem with it.
They have no problem.
Yes, sir. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, uh, consideration of approval of grant agreement for the recent service, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir, Edco County has been awarded one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars by the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Division for the installation of a standby generator to provide alternative power to the Edco County Emergency Operations Center. This grant is comprised of both federal seventy-five percent and non-federal twenty-five percent matching funds, which is provided by the state. The planned use of this grant is to purchase and install the standby generator here at the county administration building, and to relocate the emergency operations center from the sheriff's office to this location. This will allow for better continuity of operations for our emergency services and county administrator staff. It will also eliminate the need to tie up critical space at the sheriff's office during an emergency. It is recommended that the board of commissioners accept this grant award by adopting the project ordinance and budget amendment, and authorizing me to execute the grant agreement. Also, it is recommended to designate me as the applicant's agent, which is to update their records where Mr. Lorenzo Carmen is currently listed as, sir.
Motion? Question? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, is approved. Next appointment, the first appointment is Edco County College Board of Justice. Mr. James Long Town, who aspired to retire from service to the college and knew Mr. Carl Warren, is recommended to be reappointed, is there a motion?
No, that Mr. Carl Warren, sir.
Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Warren is appointed, the next is the town, Charles Bur, that's the territorial, Mr. Phil Warren is recommended for reappointment, is there a motion?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, is approved. Contracts are viewed for approval, anything to be brought to the board's attention?
I do want to point out, Mr. Chairman, that you see, the last on the list is for financial audit. Our staff and I have, our finance staff solicited on two different occasions, bid responses and qualifications uh, bid responses and qualifications from, uh, auditing firms to do our financial audit. Uh, after both solicitations, we only received the one response, which is from Carl Riggs in England. Um, we did check out their qualifications and their references. Um, they are a, a large firm, um, but they do have offices in Greenville, Riley and Williamson as long as, as among many other offices, but I did want to point out that.
This is a mute.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments that you need to bring in?
Uh, no, sir. Happy to answer.
Is there a motion to, uh, approve contract? Is there a move? Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, is approved. Council Lisa, Council Lisa, is there anything to be brought to the board's attention?
No, sir. For your review, it's a technical.
A motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, the department reports for review. You have, uh, received all of those reports in your agenda package. Uh, any questions in reference to any of the reports, or any comments on your, any questions from the board? Moving on to, uh, D, the manager's report. Mr. Evans?
Uh, those are there for your review. I'm happy to, um, answer any questions, uh, that you might have.
Any questions in reference to any of the items listed on the manager's report? Hearing none, we're moving on to the commissioner's report. Uh, Mrs. Thomas, yes, there is designated voting delegate for the July twenty-fifth to, uh, twenty-second, uh, National Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. Uh, normally that is Mrs. Harris. Would that be right this time?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Miss Harris is, is, has, uh, designated voting deleg, delegate for that conference. Attorney for the board, Mr. Loach, anything for the board? At this time, uh, ladies and gentlemen, this is for the closed session, discussing economic development. Is there a motion to the board, closed session, discussing economic development?
So moved.
Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I'm hearing none. We now will be moving with the day of session.